Are we good yet? Okay, okay. So now we'll call the special meeting of the Glendale City Council to order at 3:41 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members. Asatrian?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian, Mayor Brotman.
Here. And your report, please.
Agenda for the Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, April 13, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is next?
Next is item one, Police Department, regarding acceptance of grant funding from the United States Department of Homeland Security, 2022 Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant Program. A resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $1,246,990 and authorize the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with the city of Los Angeles for the award of funds under the fiscal year 22 UASI grant program. B, resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with FLOC Safety for the procurement of automatic license plate reader equipment in an amount not to exceed $157,000. C, resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute necessary software agreements with Ray Shift LLC to provide software licenses and upgrades for the life of the software subject to Police Department budget availability. D, resolution to appropriate $1,246,990 from the Urban Area Security Initiative's grant program grant revenue.
Okay, thank you. Few different items here. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Brotman. And members of City Council, Lieutenant Alex Grecorian is at the podium, ready to present this item. The team from the Police Department, who I'm sure will be able to answer all of your questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, my name is Lieutenant Alex Grecorian with the Glendale Police Department, and I will be presenting a very short presentation for you regarding the 2022 UASI Grant Program. We're asking that you accept $1,246,990, excuse me, $1,246,990 in grant funding for three programs, the first being FLOC Safety Automated License Plate Readers, the amount of $155,000, Gray Key Licensing, the amount of $91,990, and the Time Division Multiple Access License for $1 million. FLOC Safety, as you know, is the automated license plate reading program. We have 24 cameras currently in the community. It gives us real-time notification of stolen cars, license plates, and wanted and dangerous vehicles. To date, in 2022, we recovered 31 stolen vehicles, and we've successfully used this program to solve homicides, burglaries, and robberies. But most importantly, it has technology that provides actionable, accurate evidence that increases place closure rates for us. Next is the Gray Key. It's requesting premium licensing for this software. It's a mobile device examination software, and it's used for accessing and acquiring digital evidence from locked mobile devices. It is compatible with both iOS and Android devices, and it allows for the unlimited number of attempts on these devices. And we currently have two licenses, and we're looking to expand that by four additional years for each license. And then lastly, the third program is the Time Division Multiple Access, or TDMA, right there. It's related to our ICI system, and it upgrades the capabilities, the system core, and the several radio sites. It increases call carrying capacity throughout the Los Angeles operational area and expands the number of voice paths available to radio system users. And lastly, it reduces and even eliminates the need to wait to talk when activating the radio. So when an officer pushes on their radio mic, they can speak without stepping on somebody And lastly, we're asking that you dispense with competitive bidding for FLOC. It's the only ALPR equipment approved to integrate with our existing Axon camera equipment. And Gray Key, it is software that has been performance-checked within our lab, the VLCR lab. And lastly, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer along with my team if you have any.
Okay, short and sweet. Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Devine?
No. Actually, it sounds like these are all very helpful to the Police Department, and I'm in favor of giving you all the help you can get, right? And we're very lucky to get this grant, I think. Yeah, so I would approve the item.
Councilmember Satrian? Any questions? Councilmember Kasakian?
No, I think it's a great tool and asset to have in your arsenal of keeping our neighborhood safe, and I support it.
Sorry, I didn't know you were going to respond, so I thought you were saying no. Did you have any comments?
No, I'm just excited.
Oh, you're just excited. Okay. How many FLOC cameras are we adding?
With this, we'd add additional 20 cameras.
And we have 24 now?
We have 24. We have four on the way, and then another 20.
Oh, so this is a big increase.
Correct. We'd essentially be doubling our program.
And how do we decide where we place these? These are all fixed locations, right?
They are fixed locations. It's a collaboration with the Police Department, our crime analysts, and FLOC themselves.
Okay, but we'll be putting them all around, various locations around Glendale?
We try and get the most bang for our buck as to where we're placing it. So traditionally, we'll pick neighborhoods where have one point of ingress or egress or very busy intersections. That way, we can get the biggest net, if you will.
Okay, and I know some neighborhoods have participated by purchasing cameras, is that right? Few neighborhoods or just one neighborhood? I don't know. Whiting Woods did, I think.
No, it's College Hills. They're the first to purchase a camera through the Police Department, and they've put it right in their neighborhood, so it's really worked out for them. There's only two ways into their community, so they have 360-degree coverage in that area. So it's a really good program for them, and we're trying to push it out to other homeowners' associations.
So any neighborhood can purchase a camera? They don't have access to any of the data, of course?
Correct.
They just basically, purchasing it just gives them the right to kind of say, we want this in our neighborhood?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that's great.
How much is that? How much does that cost per neighborhood?
So their prices just went up, but as I remember them, it's $2,500 a year. It's a two-year minimum and a $350 installation fee. It's a very, very good bargain.
Is it? And you explain that to the homeowners' association?
Yes.
Because that sounds like a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but it's very, very well worth it.
And while I have, on the Gray Key Premium License, is there, you know, is this where that you read in the newspaper where they're trying to figure out the mobile phone and the automobile companies won't give, or someone won't give them access to their devices? Am I confusing this with some other program?
Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm Dr. Catherine Nguyen, a lab director. So Gray Key is specific to mobile devices and laptops. So it's separate from vehicle forensics.
That's the difference. Okay, thank you. That cleared it up completely. Thank you.
No public comments on this?
Uh, Mayor, we have no public comments.
Okay. So remove the item, thank you.
I'll second.
Second. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
And Mayor Brotman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what is next?
Item number two, Management Services Regarding Sustainability Commission, 2023 Work Plan, a motion for City Council to approve the 2023 Sustainability Commission Work Plan.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, it's the mayor, member of City Council. As part of the powers and duties of the Sustainability Commission, they are required to prepare and submit an annual work plan to the City Council for your review and approval. And as such, during December and January last, January this year, December of last year, during these two meetings, the commissioners selected their work priorities and voted to approve the work plan for submission to City Council for approval. With that, I'm going to turn it over to David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, to walk you through that approved work plan by the Sustainability Commission. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. So yes, excited to show you the work plan that was prepared by our Sustainability Commission. A key reason for developing this work plan is for the Commission to define its priorities, focus its efforts on the most important issues. This can help ensure that the Commission is making the most impactful use of its time So to assist the Commission in developing the work plan, staff developed a work plan process. And I'll go through these, but quickly. We asked the Commissions to prioritize those issues that were important to them, define those priorities, choose projects associated with those priorities, and then finally select a lead to support that project through the work plan process. The purpose of the work plan is to set the strategic priorities and projects for the Commission for 2023. The work plan is an outline. Details will come as they implement the different projects within the work plan, and it is assumed that the Climate Action Adaptation Plan is a assumed responsibility of all the Commission, so we didn't separate it out for projects in this work plan. So we asked the Commission, so a little bit of history, during the course of 2020, 2021, each department came to the Commission and presented to the Commission the efforts and programs that they were doing regarding sustainability and environmental programs. And the reason we did that is the Commission felt that earlier on, they didn't have enough information to make a work plan, so they wanted to receive this information, and then from that, they could decide what their key priorities were. So based on that background, we asked the Commissioners to send us a list of their different priorities. Staff received that list, and we ranked those, categorized those different priorities that the Commission sent to us into these seven priorities that you see in front of you on this slide. We then asked the Commissioners to rank those, the seven priorities, and the ranking results showed the Commission came up with five priorities to work on for the 2023 work plan. So all this was done in public on the dais, and the Commission's had a good, robust debate about the different ranking priorities. And they decided to, number four, they decided to have green spaces and urban heat island effect combined together to make one priority. Once the Commission had selected the priorities, we actually had preset definitions regarding those priorities, but we wanted the Commission to edit and discuss those definitions. And the reason we wanted the Commission to do that is based on those definitions of the priorities, the Commission would then develop the different work projects. So again, they did that on the dais, and it was productive and productive conversation that they had. Once the Commissions discussed the definitions, they decided and worked on developing projects for each priority area, and then finally, the top projects were incorporated into the work plan. So for an example, one of the priority areas for the Commission is that of public outreach. When discussing the projects, they came up with five or seven potential projects that could be used for public outreach. So we asked them to vote, and they voted on the top three, which was tree planting, student sustainability ambassadors, and donation, UAS collection events. So those three ones that got the most votes from the Commission found their way onto the 2023 work plan. So we did this for all the priority areas that the Commissioners had selected previously. We thought it was necessary that each project area and priority area had a lead. The lead for these areas would be advocate for the priority areas. The leads would be keep informed with relevant city issues and items, and also stay on top of innovations within the area. The leads have subject matter experts and can provide useful insights to staff on the priorities on the projects. The leads can also speak to external experts and bring those experts in front of the Commission for presentations to the Commission on the particular projects. And the leads will finally help coordinate Commission efforts and support priority execution. However, just to be aware, Sustainability Commission staff will coordinate any internal discussions that the leads may have with city staff going forward. So I'm proud that the Commission has worked really hard to develop this 2023 work plan. As you can see, they selected five key areas to work on. Those are public outreach, energy emissions reductions, water conservation, green spaces, and urban heat island, and mobility. So we're very much looking forward to working with the Commission on these projects. So how the plan works, so the Commissioners may review plans, programs, and reports. They'll serve as a resource to staff, provide knowledge and ideas and expertise in subject areas, such as single-use plastics, for example, which Commission did in the past. And the Commissions may request presentations from external parties and experts. And finally, the Commission will provide recommendations to staff, and ultimately, we're asked for, provide recommendations to City Council. The Commission also promotes sustainability programs at public events to let the public know what the city is doing in these areas. And finally, the Commission may identify issues that may, environmental issues and sustainability issues that may not be being addressed by the city currently. So there are a number of alternatives for City Council to consider. The City Council may approve the Sustainability Commission 2023 work plan. Alternatively, the City Council may choose to direct the Sustainability Commission to add City Council recommendations to the 2023 work plan, or City Council may consider any other alternative not proposed by staff. And with that, I'm able to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones. People call me mayor, so I'll call you doctor, okay? Comments? Councilmember Devine? Or questions?
Yes. Waste reduction was omitted.
Correct.
Wasn't added on to another priority or?
No, that's a very good question, Councilmember Devine. And the Commission felt at the time that the city is doing a lot of work in space reduction, and previous ordinance have been passed, like the plastics waste, so they felt that they didn't need to focus their time on that.
That's what I was hoping your answer was going to be. Excellent. Okay, my next question, well, it sounds like they're going to have their work cut out for them because they each have their outreach priority. And the example for public outreach, that's the slide, if you can put that one up. Example, public outreach. So there is a head of that project or priority, and then under that, everyone has a kind of a responsibility? Is that the way it works?
That is correct. So a good example would be, for example, the Student Sustainability Ambassador's project. We have two ex officio students from there that have real knowledge of how we potentially develop a student sustainability program. So they go out, they'll talk to their colleagues, talk to other organizations, see what that program looks like, and bring that information back to the Commission. And then the Commission, as a whole, would debate and ask some questions about how such a program would go forward, and if that's something that the Commission wanted to do, the Commission would then vote on it and decide to go forward with such a program.
Then why in this chart is Alec Bartzakov and Jennifer Pinkerton and Kudo listed as part of that? Is that the way I'm reading this correctly?
Yes, because they had an interest in being part of those different priorities. So it's their personal interest to say that they wanted to be, for example, Commissioner Bazemore wanted very much to be involved in the energy emissions reductions. So it was their personal choice to say, we want to help out on that area.
And are they going to be meeting, or is all of their information gathered and then brought to?
All the information will be gathered, then brought to the Commission meeting. Correct.
So there'll be reports every meeting on each one of these priorities?
Or the priorities that the Commission chooses to address immediately. So they will say, we want to agendize priority number one, public outreach, for staff to come back and present information and report, and then we'll agendize that on a future meeting and do that.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions.
I like the process. I like what you've outlined here, and I particularly like how all of the members of the Commission have picked where the areas they would like to focus. I think this is a model that we could incorporate on our own council here, and one I've advocated for, for us to select areas of specialization and expertise and do deeper dives into these policy areas. So hopefully, this works, and I'm sure with your hard work, it will. Thank you for the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Satrian?
I don't have questions, but I did have some recommendations for the Commission. I echo Councilmember Kasakian's sentiments about the process and the report itself. I like the categories that were selected under public outreach. If it, and these aren't like, I'm not asking it to be like mandatory. I want them to maybe just go through a process themselves, but I think we've done a lot of work in the area of sustainability as it pertains to ordinances that our City Council and previous City Council have passed, them looking into how we also educate our public on these ordinances and rules that have changed over time, and the different programs that have become available. As it pertains to water conservation, you know, one of the things I noticed that we have this turf replacement program that on the onset, you think that you're actually saving money if you switch out, but if you actually go and, if you're attempting to switch out a larger size of your landscape, it requires a permit that would cost more than you would save through the rebate program. So really looking at the details of what we have and how much we're charging people for permit fees and how we actually make it affordable for people to switch over and for those rebate programs to actually work, because I think it would encourage more people to do that. This was something that I was going to bring up once we had our new system in place, but looking at public-private partnerships for EV chargers as part of their number two. And then parks and green spaces, this is something that I've been talking to staff about, but looking at some of our city-owned parking lots and structures to see where we could potentially incorporate green spaces in downtown for us to convert, so we don't have to do land acquisition. But I think that goes along well within their number four priority. And then I think lastly, I'll add, as we're talking about water conservation, when I did my briefing with the water staff, you know, GWP has prepared this amazing website where people can go and check out the different native plants for them to be able to conserve water and energy, but most people don't know that that tool actually exists. So I think it would be worthwhile for that to also be part of both your water conservation and public outreach. That's all I have. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, I echo Councilmember Kasakian's point about the fact that people are kind of taking on areas of responsibility and how perhaps Council could model that. I do like that idea. And I didn't know about this turf replacement issue.
I didn't either. I got so excited, I recommended it to someone, and then I went and looked them, sure enough.
So something we should probably look into because that seems self-defeating.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Satrian has already shared that issue with me, and staff is looking into it.
Okay. I just, I had a, well, one question is, it's called the 2023 Work Plan. Is that a fiscal 2023, '24? Is that what this would be for?
It is, yeah, because they started in December, and they approved their own work plan at the January meeting, so.
Oh, so this is a calendar year? Not a fiscal year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, this is a calendar year. Okay. And so we're already in the year? Okay. I just wasn't sure about that. And then they have, you know, one of the things they have here is, under green space, increase urban tree canopy 25% over 10 years. Now, that's a policy that we've adopted and Public Works, Lorn Click, the urban forestry team is hard at work on that. What role does the Sustainability Commission, what role do they see themselves playing in that?
The role they would see themselves playing in that is supporting that initiative and saying what a great job the city is doing, and promoting that initiative when they go out and do public events, to say the city has this program to increase its urban tree canopy, so to play that type of, as I said, communications outreach role regarding that work that's being done.
Okay, because it doesn't, like, that's really going to be driven by public works. It's not something you have to get the community necessarily. I mean, yeah, people are, we do have people requesting replacements of trees, so I guess that is something that would be worthwhile, you know, getting people to know that they can do that. But there's a limited role for them to play with that. I was kind of wondering, you know, especially having Jennifer Pinkerton on the Commission and her interest in, you know, plastics and reusables and food waste and all that, I am surprised, and maybe that could come under public outreach, but like, this is a big problem. Like, we have these, and I think Councilmember Satrian said the same thing, we have, like, the ordinance skipped the stuff, which is, you know, no straws, stirs put out, but it's, you know, it's not happening, right? It's not, it's not happening. People are very, very slow to change. And then we talk about our new plastics ordinance that we want to, we want to adopt, and I think the big item in our discussion was, we want to make sure that people know about it and people, you know, do it, not through slapping of fines, but through education. So I'm surprised that, you know, and food waste, too. I know I brought up the other day about, you know, how we really should be doing kind of a campaign around, you know, not food waste and particularly like sorting organics, because I don't, you know, I bet most people still don't really understand what goes where. So all that kind of stuff, where, is that something they're saying they don't want to work on, or is that really part of this public outreach?
It's not that they don't want to work on it, they just didn't select it as one of their current priorities. They selected these other issues that was talked about in the meeting as general. But again, there was, and they made the choice to select these issues. But again, this is a reason that we're in front of council today, because if you think that is something that you want the Commission to work on, and we can build that into their work plan.
For me, I'll see what my colleagues do, but I think those are things that they're well-suited to help with, and they're things that we really need help with. I don't know if there's a sense that we should kind of ask them to kind of maybe give some priority to that.
We could do that.
I think it would be worthwhile for staff to take our comments back, for them to consider.
Absolutely.
I know that they went through their own process, and if it's in front of us, for us to also provide our feedback, I think it would be worthwhile for our feedback to go back.
Okay. So if you could transmit this if they're not, you know, watching?
Okay.
And just to add a bright spot into this, because I agree with everything that's been said, I was recently in a fast food drive-through, and they asked me if I wanted utensils, and I said, no, thank you, but thanks for asking. So some are, some are taking, are taking the hint and doing it.
But they're not even supposed to ask, right? Maybe fast food, drive-through, they can, but otherwise, I don't think they're even supposed to ask, but that's a long way, I don't know. And it's not just us. I mean, I know there's all this statewide legislation. I was just in Sacramento, and you go into the airport in Sacramento, and it's like they're giving you, you know, plastic straws, and they've got plastic cups out and at the convention. I mean, nobody's doing it in Sacramento. It's, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, these legislators are going through the airport, they're going through the hotels. I mean, much of it, I think, has to do, Mayor, with staffing and where our priorities are and how we are able to enforce it. I mean, we did, we took bold steps on this council when we banned Mylar balloons in Glendale, but you know, I've now gone to a number of stores in Glendale where I see Mylar balloons filled with helium being sold. I'm not going to call out names here, I can pass along to staff, but the point is, you know, along with shopping carts, along with a number of other things, we make the best efforts to try and be good actors, but unfortunately, we need some level of enforcement behind whatever it is that we enact.
Yeah, and I think part of my point is that it is a matter of getting people to understand, because I, you know, like, well, I had one experience which was, which was, yeah, I guess I won't say the story either, but it was like one of those dollar-type stores, and they had Mylar balloons, and I spoke to them, and I didn't say who I was or anything, and then they just ignored me, and then I And then I had staff go and speak to them, and then the next time I went in, I saw a sign that says, we are no longer, you know, due to the City of Glendale ordinance, we are no longer supplying Mylar balloons.
I wonder if it's the same store.
And I was just really, you know, and so that's a matter of just telling them. I mean, nobody had to cite them, right? I'm sure it was just somebody coming in and saying, hey, this is, you can't do this. So, that would be the thing. I don't know what the Sustainability Commission can do on that, but that's, that is our big challenge, I think, with a lot of this stuff.
I think when, for the Public Outreach Committee, I think it has to encompass everything, not just specifics. And I think, you know, for us to give you a list of specifics, I think is like, you know, not really necessary. But I think that you should just do all of the outreach for all of the ordinances, for all of the legislation that we passed here in our city.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor City Council, Councilmember Devine, that's a great idea, and it's been brought up before, and staff is working on a list of things you cannot do in Glendale for a comprehensive publication of all the legislative, like you mentioned, all the ordinances that council has adopted.
Okay. So, somebody want to move the item?
I'll move the item, second.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmembers Asatryan.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Asakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Yes, thank you very much. And next is uniforms.
Yes, next is Fire Department, regarding Fire Department uniform purchasing, GALL's uniforms. A resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to issue purchase order agreements with GALL's uniforms in the amount of $500,000 over five years.
Mr. Galadion.
Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, the majority of 260 Fire Department employees are required to have specialized uniform, to wear specialized uniform, and the chief and the Fire Department have connected with multiple vendors over the last couple of months to explore the options that are available to them. And GALL's uniforms were deemed to be the best vendor to provide the services that the Fire Department needs. They found them, in addition to being extremely responsible, responsive and responsible, they have competitive pricing, as well as multiple brick-and-mortar locations that the Fire Department personnel can access, in addition to an online ordering portal that is valuable to them. So, with that, the Department is requesting to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the Deputy Director of Finance or purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to move forward. If you like, I don't know if Chief Ernst has anything to add to my comments, but if you like more detail or have questions, Chief Ernst is available to respond.
Well, maybe you could just mention, you know, there was an RFP, and then I think the price differential was insignificant, and so you're, maybe you could just run through what you told us in the briefings.
Mayor Brotman, Councilmember Staff, the GFD, as you know, seeks to dispense with competitive bidding for our Fire Department uniform contract. This item went to bid in 2022. There were two respondents to the bid. The bid was initially awarded to the low bid by less than a, less than a $1,000 margin. The secondary part of the spec, other than the bid amount, was looking for, as Mr. Galani had mentioned, some of the 24/7 ordering specialties that are required of a department that works 24/7, whereas the award-winning bid, they were a standard 40-hour-a-week application. With that, the secondary piece of the, in addition to the ordering online, is the tracking of orders, where the vendor themselves will monitor the allotment, the annual allotment of uniforms. So, if a member was to put in a uniform request, it'll, it's automatically tracked on their portal whether that member will have to pay for that under their own, or whether it's a budget-considered item. So, that's a considerable efficiency piece. It takes a lot of load off of the staff work for the Fire Department, in addition to the multiple brick-and-mortar locations within LA County, Orange County, and Riverside County. The total contract value over the five years is $500,000. We do see during the initial year, we will use probably the majority of that, fifth of that, the $100,000, because we are now into the second year without having a contract in place, so a lot of the MOUs do call for uniform allotment. So, we see some additional ordering during this first year, and then we do expect to stay well within the total amount of the $500,000. And that completes my comments. I'm available for any of your other questions.
Any questions?
I actually have a question for, I guess, City Manager or City Attorney, but none on the floor. Somebody wants to ask, okay.
Oh, go ahead. If you want to ask.
So, what would we need to change in our structures in order to avoid this from happening in the future, where they're taking a year, and then because it's the lower bid, but the better bid allows for them to have the access they need? What would we need to change in our own structure and charter to avoid this in the future?
Councilmember Sotrian, so sometimes there, if knowing kind of this could happen going in, we could maybe structure the procurement in a way that it takes into factors other than price, but oftentimes, that still requires a dispensable competitive bid, but at least you would know it upfront when you do it. Another method we've talked about, and we'll be talking about when we bring the item regarding potential charter amendments, is to revise the charter to provide some more flexibility to take into factors besides price as the primary determinant. So, we'll discuss that when we bring that back to you in a couple of weeks.
Essentially, Councilmember Sotrian, what Mr. Garcia was referring to is best value purchase as opposed to lowest bid.
Right, okay. So, that would be in the report that you would be bringing back? Or could we ask that?
Yeah, we will be opening it up for council to have a discussion about that, and if council wants to have that as part of it, we can certainly include it. We've had the discussion once before, about five, 10 years ago, and so we can certainly bring that back to you to discuss how we can make those changes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move the item, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatryan.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Asakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Brotman.
Yes. And I haven't been asking for public comment, but of course, if there are any, you'll tell us. Okay, thank you very much. What's next? Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 4:18 PM. Thank you. Now, we open for closed session. Oh, we're on? Okay. So, now we'll call the council meeting to order for closed session at 4:18 PM, and maybe we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmembers Asatryan.
Yes.
Devine.
Oh, here.
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 Najarian, Mayor Brotman.
Here. And your report, please.
Yeah, closed session items. Closed session item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivisions D2 and E2 of section 54956.91, potential case. Excuse me.
Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivision D2 and E5 of section 54956.91, potential case. See conference with legal counsel pending litigation, California Rifle and Pistol Association, Incorporated et al versus City of Glendale et al, USDC case number 222CV07346SBJC. D would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.91, one potential case. And E, public employee performance evaluation, City Manager and City Attorney.
Okay, and I believe we are going to continue 1E, the public employee performance evaluation, till May 2nd, because of Councilmember Najarian's absence. And do we have anticipate any, anything to report out?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting on item 1D, and I would also note for the record on item 1A, the facts and circumstances giving rise to the potential exposure litigation relate to potential liability under the California Voting Rights Act and the city's at-large election system. And under 1B, the facts and circumstances giving rise to potential litigation include the threat of litigation received from the property owner at 3810 to 3816 Fourth Avenue. So, those facts should be noted for the record.
Okay, thank you. So, we will adjourn to closed session.